... comment if you can read item number 20.
Setting geographic boundaries for district elections, including recommendation D, that council consider adoption of a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara establishing single member districts for the election of council members.
Okay, and before we get started, we have an announcement about any interpretation in Spanish, if you wanted, Carlos, if you'd like to do that.
My name is Carlos Cerecedo, I'm a court certified interpreter translator for the Superior Court in Santa Barbara. This hearing will be carried out bilingualy, in Spanish simultaneous interpretation on Channel 18, and interpreters are downstairs simultaneously interpreting to Spanish. We have four earphones connected here, so if you prefer to hear the whole hearing in Spanish, they are right there on the third road, and they're already connected, and you can hear the whole hearing in Spanish. When you come up front, if you decide to express yourself in Spanish, I'll be sitting here and I'll be doing the interpretation for you in Spanish. Para aquellos que quieran escuchar, está todo, esto va a ser totalmente en español y en inglés. Aquí tengo los audífonos para los que se sienten ahí y quieren escucharlo en español. También la audiencia va a estar llevada en interpretación simultánea en el canal 18 de la televisión para aquellos que quieran escucharlo en español. Thank you very much, my name is Carlos Cerecedo, Judicial Council Certification Number 300249, and that's the requirement that I have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. I'm Kristi Schmidt, Director of Administrative Services. As you know, over the last several weeks, staff has been engaged in a expedited public input process to collect information from the public about their preferences with regard to district elections, and in particular with regard to the geographic boundaries of six electoral districts. We had our first civic engagement workshop on Saturday, February 28th. That included a public hearing to collect some initial input, and also input on three sample maps, and an introduction to ways that people could submit written comments and/or alternative maps to our contractor, National Demographics Corporation, to help with that input process. And then over the next two and a half weeks, we collected input on the three sample maps through our website, we collected written comments through the website, and through email, and all sorts of different modes, and then we had people submitting alternative maps through the use of an online tool that allowed people to draw district boundaries on their own, or also through more traditional pen and paper maps that people submitted. And then we had held a second civic engagement workshop on the evening of March 18th, where we summarized the input we'd received so far, and took additional public comment with regard to the district boundaries. Yesterday, we did post a summary report from National Demographics Corporation on the city's website, so that people could take a look at it in advance of this meeting, but we will have Doug Johnson from MDC here today to walk through that summary of that input with you today. In addition to the summary, we do have a public hearing, so people can make additional public comment on the boundaries. And then we'll be asking you to provide direction to the city administrator and the city attorney regarding district boundaries, and to consider the adoption of a resolution establishing those boundaries. With that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Johnson, and he can start his report.
Make sure your mic's on there.
Sorry, thank you. And a mayor members of council, it's a pleasure to be with you again, and this has been quite a process. It has been very fast, and I do want to express my appreciation to your staff for how well they've accommodated and got everything set up, and got the word out on all this, and especially to the public, because I do a lot of these projects, and a lot of them, even when we have lots of time, don't get much turnout, and this one with very compressed time period, we got phenomenal turnout. I think the hearing you just went through showed that that's apparently fairly common in this city, but it's always a thrill for me to see. So, we did do the two forums, we put the system up, we got about, I think we're at 18 maps that the public submitted, so that was great input, because these maps take a lot of effort. About half of those were done through the online system, about half through, people drew on the paper map, would like to see a map like this, or a couple of them just sent in a letter, saying, let me describe the map I'd like to see, and then we would take that letter and draw it for them, and put it in the mix. And so we took all these maps, and on the 18th, did a public forum to discuss them, and walked through all of them in detail, and I'll do some of that tonight, not quite as in-depth as we did that evening, to give you a sense of where the different maps went, what the ideas were, and where the key decisions lie in the city. One of the things that I always encourage is for the public to share both the map they want to see, and their thinking why. And they certainly did that here. You have about a 70-page packet of comment forms, and letters, and emails, and everything that came in. But the reason I emphasize that is that what we often see is someone who lives, for example, on the west side, spends hours or days fine-tuning the map on the west side, and then just kind of finishes the map so it's balanced in the rest of the city. And then someone who lives, say, in the north or in the east side, would then spend hours or days fine-tuning their side of the city, and then just kind of finish the west side. So, it's not a matter of you have to choose just one of the maps before you. We can certainly take elements of this map, and elements of that map, and put them together to make the map that's best for the city. So don't think, as I go through these, don't think of this as an all-or-nothing decision. What I'm scrolling through here is the summary report we put together on the process and the plans. Obviously, if we just had a forum last week, this was put together very quickly, and I got the staff on Friday, and they got it reviewed and posted on Monday, so it has been on the city website since yesterday, and available for everyone. We did get, as I mentioned, 17 plans drawn by the public in before the deadline. We've actually had a couple of comments and input coming in since then. One very creative person I liked, they knew they were past the deadline for the plan, but they still used the online system to say, here's the neighborhood that I care about, and drew that, and just sent that in as an email, so that was very useful. Helps me to get very precise definitions of neighborhoods. But the plans covered a broad spectrum of approaches, so let me, rather than going through each one individually, let me try to group them a little bit. Let's scroll down through here. There we go. So this table on page three, this is a summary table, and this information was actually shown in the forum last week, broken out plan by plan. The first thing I direct you to is, what I tried to do is group them by what plan they used as a base. So we had draft one, and then draft one revised, which was a tiny, single census block move from draft one, and then we had three people that, or three organizations that drew plans that were modifications of draft one. They started with that, kind of as their preferred base, and then made changes to it. Draft three was probably the most popular, in terms of comments. You can see we got 10 different comments, both of the forums or by mail, in support of it. And then it was also the most popular template, so we got one, two, three, four, seven people that used that as the template, and then asked for changes to it. Then we had three others that, really two groups, Mission Heritage sent in a first draft, and then a final draft, that took districts one and three, they were identical in drafts one and three, and kept those two, and then significantly redrew the entire rest of the map, which is why I have them in a separate group. And then the last, well, poor draft two was kind of alone, no one used that as a template, and worked from that. And then we had three who jumped in from a blank map, and kudos to them, that's definitely the hardest approach, and takes the most work. So we had a plan called 3-2-1 distribution, Mr. Crowe submitted a map, and then a downtown district map. Now, the shading on this is a little bit subjective, but it's done for kind of quick reference. In terms of population balance, this is the difference between the smallest and the largest district. So if the largest district is 4% over, and the smallest district is 3% under our target ideal, that difference between four and three is a 7% deviation. It's a little bit of an odd way to measure it, but it's the way the courts say to measure it. So we really have to be within 10, and that's pushing our luck, if we're at 10. Really, the goal on balance is to be as close to zero as you can be while achieving your goals. So if you're trying to keep a neighborhood together, and there's no way to keep that neighborhood together without a couple percent of deviation, that's okay, because it's clear why you have that deviation. It's all about having a reason for it. A couple of them are yellow, those are ones, you know, population deviation is, and population balancing is very tedious work, you're going through one census block by at a time. For the general public, using the online system, which is much slower than the tools I have, we're not demanding perfect balance. So the yellows are plans that could get to within 10, and actually, we can get them within five in all likelihood, with essentially me cleaning them up. So I didn't, if they're yellow, there's a concern, but don't rule it out for that concern, because we can fix it. The reds, though, like Mr. Crowe's plan, one district is three times the size of another district, or two and a half times the size of another district, way beyond what we could clean up within the stated goals of that, so I flagged his red for a big problem. In terms of looking at the other general criteria that I can more or less mathematically look at, or fairly clearly look at, contiguity, the only one that had a problem, because it was barely contiguous, was Mission Heritage in their first draft, and obviously, they fixed that in their second draft. So we're good on that. Relatively compact, we have two plans that are somewhat, this is a very subjective measure, and then Mission Heritage first draft had a big problem that they fixed in their second draft. The other one is looking at the percentages in terms of how they correlate with the settlement agreement. So the settlement agreement is to aim to try to get two majority Latino seats, looking at citizens of voting age, within the other requirements of race can't be the predominant factor, we want to follow communities, and follow major features where we can. So the ones in green achieve that. The ones in yellow are close, and we could make some adjustments to those seats, so again, saying yes, there's a concern, if you want to choose one of those maps, we should either adjust them a little bit to get them up to those numbers, or work with the plaintiffs to explain why we're not adjusting those numbers, and see if they'd agree to that. The only two that I highlight as red are a long ways from that, and it would need fundamental change to where the lines are drawn, in order to get to those numbers. The CCPP plan I highlighted, it has one seat that's 56% Latino, that's because it's way underpopulated, and that's why it has such a deviation. What they said in their submission was, we don't want to go as far east with District One, but find the spot in the middle there where it balances. Well, we didn't have time to go back and forth and fine-tune it ourselves, so I took it all the way back to Salinas, and essentially, we know they want to go back out east, and that will bring this 56 down to the 53 or 52 of all the other plans. One common theme as well was around De La Guerra and Solidad, there were a lot of comments about the 700 block of, I think it's Solidad, wanting to be moved, and I highlighted that because it was a common theme that was mentioned and drawn into, the community, Neighborhood Alliance raised it, Ms. Green's map raised it, the Santa Barbara Neighborhood map raised it, Maintaining Neighborhoods all mentioned it. They all mentioned that as a goal, so I wanted to highlight that as a common theme. Then we had a lot of comments, I mean, obviously, with 100 people at the first forum, and I didn't get a specific count, but about 40 at last week's forum, a lot of them were very general, and so what I went through and tried to tally, and people may disagree about one or two, so don't take these as absolute counts, but tried to highlight people that specifically supported a plan, or specifically opposed a plan, and that's what the last two columns in this report were. Draft three got a lot of comments in support of it. The Ellings Park or Royal Borough area, which essentially is plan, it's draft three, just with those two zero-population things moved, also got a lot of comments. And then the forum last week, the Santa Barbara Community Two map, got a lot of positive comments. And on the flip side, draft one and draft one revised really were the only maps that got a number of negative comments. Draft three did get two of those, and then a couple of negative comments scattered about. So not a ton of specific yes-no's, people are much more general, talking about their own neighborhood, and wanting whatever plan is adopted to keep their neighborhood together. So, which brings us to this map, and I'll actually flip over to the live map now. One of the reasons I'm presenting from here instead of the podium is to be on the computer, so that as the public wants to make comments, I can zoom in on their specific area, or obviously, as you have questions, we can zoom in and out. I do want to highlight, both in the mapping software, I can zoom way in and see specific streets and census blocks, and tell you how many people are in different areas. We can also jump over to Google Earth, zoom way in if you want to. Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know, if you use Google Earth, it's kind of amazing, but we can actually bring the lines in, highlight the different areas, and zoom in and see the different buildings. I was doing this this morning, to see exactly where different lines ended up, and it can show you, you know, the parking lot is here, the restaurant is there. So, we can really get in and see the details of where these lines go, if there are questions. So, first on this map, the letters indicate kind of the areas where we had comments come up. The kind of bluish-purple backgrounds are near-zero population changes, so these can be made without really impacting the rest of the map, what I call ripples. When you start moving hundreds or thousands of people, then everything starts rippling out and impacting the surrounding districts. In the case of Ellings Park and Royal Borough, that's obviously zero-population areas. It's a little bit of technical work, because those parks don't follow census blocks, but they are legally defined, so we can reference them in the final resolution and implement that. And that is literally zero-population. And the comments that came up there were, that while geographically it would be a little bit of an odd shape to take that out of District Two, if we're going with a map that's based like this, this is Plan Three underneath, oh, I'm sorry, this is Community Split Two, let me switch back to Plan Three. It would look a little bit odd, and have an impact on compactness, but we got a number of comments talking about how the traffic access is actually all from the west into the parks, and how the watershed issues in the park and the Royal Borough both impact the watershed, and wanting to keep that all together. Lots of comments that they're all in the packet too, going in detail about that. And again, zero-population, so we have a nice record to point to for why that would be a non-compact change, if that's a change you choose to make. Let me stick with the little ones, little changes first. Oh, this should be, sorry, pulled up an old version of this, this is actually a K. You may have noticed there was no K. Oh, nope, I'm confusing myself. There we go. It was K on one of the early versions. The next one is Pershing Park. We did get a handful of comments that asked to move Pershing Park, and there's a couple of things going on here. One, you know, there's an apartment building here, this is actually probably a good chance for me to go to Google Earth. I can zoom in there. This is much more fun than it was 15 years ago. So as we get in here, you can see this is the plan for District Two, and this is District Three in yellow above it. I can take those off, so it's a little clearer. We've got Pershing Park, and then you have one set of apartment buildings. We're not getting into the Ambassador Apartments over there, we're not talking about those apartments over by Ambassador Park. This is just a set of apartments just north of Pershing Park. And I talked about this at last week's forum. It's an interesting dilemma, because the residents, the total population there is something like 60% Latino. So it is a Latino neighborhood in total population, and District Three is one of the districts that is majority Latino. The challenge from a numbers perspective is that the citizens who live in that apartment complex, actually, it's a couple of complexes, are much less Latino. It's only about 20% Latino amongst the citizens of voting age. So this is a common thing we look at, where, obviously, in a few years, you know, as more of those folks, as the kids get older, and as more people get citizenship, it'll be, those Latino numbers will go up. But for now, making this change would be a slight reduction in the Latino voting strength in District Three. The other choice to make is that moving the whole census block actually moves the campus. It's interesting, it doesn't move the housing, and you've heard some talk probably about moving the student housing, and there's concerns about doing that. It only moves the campus, which is zero-population. So we'd probably, well, you'd have to choose, do you want to move the campus as well, or do a split census block, which we can do, and get just the apartment in the park? The other challenge, though, let me see which is a map that does this.
Could I ask, when you say zero-population, what does that mean? I mean, nobody's living in Pershing Park, for instance.
Right, right, and in the part of the campus involved in the census block, it's only campus buildings, there's no housing, there's no dorms or anything. There's obviously a ton of student housing down there, but if we, here I'm highlighting the whole block as being moved, the student housing is all outside of that area. The other impact of this, though, if we take the whole block, or if we split the block, is a compactness concern, which is now District Two has to wrap around along the beach, essentially, it's just the beach, to pick up Ambassador Park and the apartments over there. So we do get a little bit of an odd shape that results from that change. But in terms of population deviation, you know, 97 people is not going to make a big difference either way, it's not really even going to register, but it does slightly impact the Latino voting strength in District Three, at least as measured by citizens of voting age. So, that is the second of the, I describe them as kind of the easier choices, because they don't ripple across. The third relatively easy, in terms of population, is a little bit bigger, it's about 300 people. It came up in maybe three or four comments, I don't know if I'm going to pronounce this correctly, but El Escorial Apartments. Down here, there was, they're obviously very close to the beach. Part of what's driving the discussion, why this got mentioned, is we have some very weird-shaped census blocks down here. You have this long beach block, and different ways of four and one coming together, that we weren't fine-tuning this area. On the flip side, we have blocks that go back the other way. So the El Escorial is right in here. Let me do the same thing. Take you over there. And you can see how it kind of stands somewhat alone by itself between the golf course and, I'm not sure if that's a park or what's there. We actually did have one person who mentioned the cemetery as well, being with District Four. And redistricting, there's lots of jokes about the importance of cemeteries in redistricting, but obviously, it could go either way, and not impact population numbers.
That's in the county, anyway.
Oh, right, right.
Not to worry.
Yes. So, yeah.
So, are you saying, Mr. Johnson, that there's a split census tract there, or not? I'm sorry.
No, currently, it's not. We have these weird-shaped census blocks that are very long, going both ways. So, we could move this to District Four, it could be in District One, it's about an even split. Given that only a handful, maybe three or four people mentioned it, I think most of the people drawing the lines paid very little attention, and weren't making real judgment decisions over here.
But do you know if the courts, how do the courts look on census tracts? It seems like sometimes they have to be split up, right, or?
Yes, well, it's census blocks, the tracts are huge, like 4,000 people.
Tracts, okay.
But the blocks, yes, we're always nervous when we start splitting them, and what I tend to do is look at, if you put all the population one way, in one seat, and pretended it wasn't split, would the plan be balanced? If you put it all the other way, would it be balanced? Or reasonably so? And if so, you're fine. Ideally, your splits are, put all the population on this side, and put essentially, like the campus on the other side, so you know where the people are. But when we're looking over here on the east side, that's not really an option, because as long as we're talking about this, I'll bring it up. We have this horrendous census block, which goes all the way down to Salinas, and all the way up on the hill. One of the things about census blocks is the census did these through, the original blocks were drawn based on 1950s aerials and USGS surveys, and, by computers, and they hate cul-de-sacs. They don't put lines at the end of cul-de-sacs, so what happens is the cul-de-sacs coming off of the different roads up on the hill, get put with the apartment buildings that are on cul-de-sacs down off Salinas. So, this gives us a dilemma, this is why we're talking about splitting this block, even though it's a lot of people, and we don't have a specific count either way. We have a little bit more flexibility now, because it is 2015, and we know that these population counts we're talking about are five years old. So, you know, in 2011, we're walking around telling our clients, shoot for 2% deviation, you know, try to get them really precise. Now, we have a little bit more flexibility, but we do want to get as close as we can, while respecting other choices like, don't put eucalyptus hill homes in the seat with the apartment, the large apartment buildings on Salinas, you know, that doesn't.
Well, Mr. Johnson and Madam Mayor, because this affects the east side district, which I know is of importance to the plaintiff, I'd like, you know, when they make their comments, to address if they're comfortable with these census tracts being split up like that. You're saying it's a modern age, and there's a different way to look at it now. Thank you.
Sure. So, yeah, so, and there are people here, there's about 335 people in El Escorial, so this is a little bit more, but it's not a huge number that's going to impact a lot of population deviation. The other choices that come up are much bigger issues. Up in the north end, we had, let me go to one of the plans that really raised a concern. A number of the plans divided the Upper East Neighborhood Association, and obviously, that triggered a lot of concerns, and we had a lot of comments from the Upper East area. And they actually went and drew what they called the Mission Heritage Plan. I was talking about the first draft, just so you know. So they drew the district that they were focused on, this is very common, you know, the key seat that they wanted to see put together, and then the rest of the map, they just kind of put aside, and they were one of the first maps to come in. But you can see where Five has this compactness issue, and is very, barely contiguous. So to their credit, even before I said anything, they went in and redrew the second plan. But you can see it has the same District Six that's focusing on keeping Upper East together, in this case, putting with Oak Park. So this is one approach. Not many of the maps did this, in terms of keeping that area together. One thing, too, you can see they were looking to balance the seat as much as possible, and they did it with small census blocks in here. We can clean that up, or accept that some of these blocks don't make sense, and just accept that deviation. So don't worry about the little oddities down here, that's just them balancing the The trade-off there is that when you put Upper East and Oak Park together, you've got Five over on the west, and then Four needs to get population, so it ends up coming down from the hills, and actually coming down and being the main downtown seat as well. So, all the, this is when I talk about ripples. Now we're talking big numbers, big populations, and that is kind of forced by closing off that avenue to the north. Other plans take a different approach, which is they fix, they don't have that split of Upper East that Plan One did, they put Upper East Neighborhood together, but not with Oak Park. And there are a lot of different varieties of this, as we'll go through the downtown mixes. But this is more common, and we actually got one very eloquent speaker who went on in some detail about Oak Park, and the types of housing, the types of, the general age, the types, you know, walk-to-work, that kind of stuff, that shares a commonality of interest between Oak Park and downtown. So that one speaker tied a lot of the elements of this configuration together. So that's one issue, is, it's really a two-part question. First of all, how do we unite Upper East Neighborhood and don't divide it? And then two, does it go with Oak Park, or separate from Oak Park? Okay, so the next area is downtown. Lots of different options about downtown. And downtown, in every jurisdiction, in every city especially, is often a tough issue. And downtown in every jurisdiction, in every city especially, is often a tough issue. Because usually when we talk about community of interest, about 90% or 95% of people that talk about community of interest want their community of interest kept together. They want as much of a loud voice in one seat as they can get, so they want to be kept together. There are two exceptions to that rule in general, and they're certainly not universal. One is large retirement communities, the Sun City-type developments, where turnout is 99% and they don't want to waste their votes in one seat, they want to be 99% turnout in two seats. So that comes up a lot, not really here. We don't have any of those large, couple thousand people developments here. The other is downtown. And Pasadena really started this, saying, hey, look, we want every council member to continue to have a stake in downtown, when they were doing Colorado Boulevard and taking it from the scary place it was in the 70s to the, now it's scary because there's too many darn pedestrians shopping. You know, it is kind of the ultimate, nobody goes there because it's too crowded, story now. And they, part of why they did that is they gave every council member a piece of Colorado. And some downtown communities want that. We actually have both schools of thought speaking to you in this project. So the other element that ties into this is a little bit of this F, it's the Bungalow District. We had a gentleman come and give a very good statement, very well thought out statement about the Bungalow District, the types of housing, the types of income levels, the types of work, and the types of concerns they have, and pointing out that their concerns are more walkability, getting to work, and not really the fire danger and the fire concerns that are more up in the hills. So in addition to downtown, there's also the elements of the areas that want to be with downtown, like the Oak Park Speaker or the Bungalow District Speaker. So most of the maps are somewhat like this, where you really get, let me make these little smaller, so they're not so out of our way. There we go. Essentially get four seats in downtown. We did get the downtown district plan that came in, which is essentially two. There's the general plan defined neighborhoods and then there's what the people in a given neighborhood consider downtown. And then, let me see, we had Eyes on State, which had a bigger view than just downtown. This plan was actually focused on having every seat have a part of state, whether it's District 4 and there's District 5 in most numberings, having upper state, and then all the seats down here having a piece. And so really in this approach, you end up with really 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 seats with a significant chunk of downtown. But you can see kind of the gymnastics that you have to go to get to 5. Much more common was Plan 3. But then we got another issue. The Vasallo map kind of encapsulated this, although other people mentioned it, which is a desire to put a little bit more of downtown together. And let me make sure I get this right. Yeah, so the Brinkerhoff Neighborhood, which is about 358 people below Ortega. So Mr. Vasallo and others came in and said, look, all of our connections, all of our community of interest ties are with the rest of downtown and west downtown. He did talk about, they'd love actually to take more than just the small area he was talking about, which is De Lavina to state and down to Gutierrez. But in this area that he laid out, there's about 358 people. And then if you get larger and go all the way to the freeway, you're talking about 3,000 people. So this is a smaller, less impact on the overall plan. So his proposal was to just take that area out of 3 and move it into 6, and really to accept the population deviation, because part of the challenges in his proposals, District 3 is obviously a very sensitive seat in terms of the settlement and concerns there. It is possible to keep 3 a majority Latino seat and offset a little bit of that change. We can pick up, you know, the, up here where District 3 jogs off of Mission and a block or two over here, where we're at Sola and, I'm not going to say that right, but Kowalski Street? Kowalski, oh, good. Take that up to Robbins and then just stay a little farther along Mission. It still stays majority Latino amongst citizens of voting age, and it offsets a little bit that change. But if we then start talking about the whole area of west downtown going into District 6, then we're throwing the whole district off. So this is one of the benefits of the city making that online system available, was that Mr. Vasallo was able to go in, and even though he didn't submit a whole plan, he could go in and see just how many people he was talking about and define the smallest area he could, with the smallest impact on the rest of the map. Couple of other concerns. I mentioned the Bungalow District wanting to be kept together. Believe one of the plans divided it, I forget which one that was, but they want to be kept together and they wanted to be kept with downtown. Now, a lot of the plans, including Draft 3, have this configuration where it's with a part of downtown, certainly not with the heart of downtown, it just comes over to State Street and doesn't get into west downtown and other areas. So sort of with downtown, sort of, but also with the hills, but kept together. The other issue over here is the schools. We had, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 plans come in, and all, kind of, I think from folks that were, if they weren't drawing their lines together, they certainly all had the same idea of, they also were all focused around the Solidad change. But many of them put the high school and the junior high school, which are the two schools here, in the District 1. Let me show you one example of that. So there are different ways of doing that. This is Community 2. Let's see, there was the Plan 3, oh, Plan 3 doesn't put them together. Eyes on State, I don't think did it as much of a focus, but also did it as a result of what they were drawing elsewhere. The Community Neighborhood Alliance map, what I've been calling CNA, this is the more common approach, which is to add in the schools and the population around them and to give up some of the area east of Salinas, those, some of those apartment buildings east of So that is one area of difference amongst the plans that we need to choose between is the schools in District 4 or the schools in District 1. The flip side of that is the Roosevelt Plan. So we put Plan 3 out there, the border is at Cannon Perdido, and a letter came in, and actually a number of letters came in, saying, the Roosevelt Elementary Attendance Zone goes to De La Guerra. Could that one block-wide strip be moved into District 4 in order to keep the Roosevelt Elementary community together? So it's the reverse of what some of the other plans did. Some of the other plans put the schools in District 1. This is actually taking a little bit more out of District 1. Oh, and then it's usually offset up here. Let me bring up the Roosevelt map. So that's obviously a lot of population. We make up for it by taking the Solidad area over here. Then, moving around the map, one of the challenges, we got a number of comments about where De La Guerra and Solidad come together, going back to the CNA map. This is another one of these weird census situations. You see a lot of maps have this notch, that map, that notch is not what they want. The challenge is, is that the block that fills in that notch goes way up in the Lower Riviera. So if this is a change you want to adopt, we would split, we propose to split this block as well and cut it off at the, where the general plan draws the border of the east side neighborhood. And I should add that when the time comes, and it comes in about two years, when the census is preparing for the 2020 census and drawing new block lines, let's hopefully talk to them and clean all these blocks up, so they don't have these blocks for when we come back in 2021. Then the biggest challenge, at least in terms of numbers, is over here on the east side of Salinas. All different kinds of maps in the packet. We had, you know, CNA just takes the couple of census blocks that are entirely in the east side, but east of Salinas. The Community 2 map actually follows the, proposes following the general plan's border for the east side. And then most of the maps follow what was in Drafts 1 and 3, which is roughly following the east side community border, but also picking up another whole census block and the school that's up here. I think the Cleveland School is up there. So picking up that school and the homes around that school into District 1 as well. That is a lot of people, as I mentioned. So when we start talking about doing different ways over there, we're talking about big changes in the map as a whole. So that's a quick spin around the map. One thing I would emphasize is, both as we can redraw parts of the plan and we take parts of the plan and put them together, we can also, of course, fine tune population deviation. One of the things that happens and that I actually encourage is for groups, I'm not saying this case, but for example, the Upper East Neighborhood, if they were to come in with the plans and keep this together, but it would be, you know, 2% over an acceptable deviation. Well, I'm not expecting the Neighborhood Association to come in and say which census blocks they want to boot out. You know, that's a decision that I can help them with and that I can propose to you. Yes, that's, and I'm not saying we have to do it with the Upper East Side, but yes, this neighborhood wants to be together. It's a little bit too much deviation, let's put 99% of it together and just move these pieces. So I can help you in the map you want to adopt. If it's at 9% or 10%, get it down to 5 or 4%. So that it's in a safer legal realm. So that's a lot of information to throw at you. I'm sorry to do a lot of it fairly quickly, but I'm happy to show any details, zoom in on anything you want to see, or answer any questions. And as a public comments, too, I can switch to the map that they want to talk about, so it's on the screen.
So we'll start, any questions first, or we can go right to public comment? Sounds like public comment.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Murillo.
Can we look at the census map related to the border of, okay, so Draft Map 3, Draft Plan 3, the border between District 3 and 2, or 3 and 6? There's a retirement community, I don't think it's huge, but Pilgrim Terrace.
Right.
And I think it's split in there.
Actually, the, you may see this on the, on the maps online and the maps that people drew online, it's split because this is one of those difficult census blocks. You can see highlighted there, that's the block, and it did, if they're using whole blocks, they did divide up that area. But in the draft plans and where I could already, we've proposed splitting that. So let me show you where the, and the split is right along the park.
Along the what?
Park.
There's a park in there.
There's a park. Oh, okay. So the park, but not where they live?
Right, right. So there's apartment, I think these are apartments along?
Yeah. Modock and Kentia.
Yeah, so Kentia would stay in District 3, and then everything above it, which I think is the Pilgrim, whole Pilgrim's Terrace, would be in District 6 or District 2, depending on the plan. But yes, the proposal is before you do split that Pilgrim's Terrace off from District 3 and don't include it.
Okay, thank you.
It's split where the community gardens are. That's the split right there.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you want, we can really go crazy and.
Whoa.
So, yes. So the border would run right along.
Who's in charge of that, of that bus structure there? Would that be District 2 or District 6?
My dad is.
One bench is on District 9.
Right.
The vote, the voters where they live are all contained in one district?
Yes.
Okay. That would be important to them, I'm sure.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Why don't we go to the public? We're going to start with Mr. Capello. And then Robert Johns will be next.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have a presentation, since this is probably the last time you'll hear from us on each and every one of these plans. And I think it would be of great help for you to understand where we're coming from. First, we gave you a lengthy letter, which concludes with the three plans that are acceptable to the plaintiffs. As you all recall, we want to resolve this with you. We don't want to have to go to court and fight over these boundaries. We believe the settlement agreement allows for you to have great latitude here, which you will have with regards to many of these districts. But as to the districts that are the subject matter of our interest, and I have four, my four clients are here with me, Mr. Benales, Mr. Chavez, Ms. Enda, and.
How about everybody?
My former client, Mr. Cruz, is here.
You should have not fired me.
We have Wendy Welcome, who has been in my office for.
Capello, can you go to the mic so on camera can hear you?
Certainly. Close to 20 years, and is, if this hearing goes late, will be here to handle for me because I've got to catch a plane in the morning, a very early plane, so I'm going to leave maybe in an hour or so. And next to Ms. Welcome is David Ely, our expert, our boundary expert, who's quite familiar with this, has been working with us since the very beginning, along with Morgen Kouser. Mr. Ely is a colleague of Mr. Johnson, they know each other well and have discussed these maps and these issues during the course of both the settlement negotiations and the resolution that we agreed upon. There are three maps that are acceptable to the plaintiffs. That is interesting that when we started this whole process, we submitted to Mr. Johnson and Mr. Cologne pretty much what was Map 1. Kudos to the council for going through this process and because it helped us. After going through the entire process, we think Map 3 is a better map than Map 1. And Map, what's called the Ealing's Map would be acceptable to us because it's basically Map 3. We don't, Ealing's is not an issue as far as my clients are concerned, so whatever the council wishes to do with Ealing's in Arroyo Burro, you're welcome to do. Finally, Map 1, which was the map or the information we gave to Mr. Johnson, that's acceptable to us, too, but we think Map 3 is far better. Now let me go through each and every one of these maps. Could you put up Map 3, please? And I'd like you to hear our position on them, so you know where we're coming from. I don't want anybody on the council to get any misconceptions, to have any idea that I might have said something here that I didn't mean or failed to say something that you wish you asked me. So Map 3 is the map which takes care of the east side and the west side. And when you're talking about Pilgrim Terrace right here, if you could focus in on that, Pilgrim Terrace is specifically excluded in this map because by dropping in the Pilgrim Terrace tenants, which are mostly non-Latino, it would drop the percentage below 50%. So Map 3 does not do that. If you could go down, there's a, Mr. Crowe has got a piece of property. Do you know where Mr. Crowe's issue is? I think it's right about in here. There's a map from a gentleman named Mr. Crowe. Mr. Crowe has got an interesting situation. We oppose his map because what he did was, he eliminated the two Latino districts, but his issue really is, his house is split by the census block. We didn't do that. We have no objection to putting Mr. Crowe's house in which either district he wishes to be in, either 3 or 2, the one next to it. So when you get to doing your ultimate map, if you want to take care of Mr. Crowe's house problem, we have no objections to it. If you could go to Draft Plan 2, the Ealing's Park Plan? So some people recommended that Ealing's Park and Arroyo Burro move over out of District 2 here. We don't care. Whatever you wish to do ultimately, your decision. As you can see, District 3 and District 1 remain the same, and that is our. As you can see, District Three and District One remain the same, and that is our primary interest in preserving those two districts, which we have spent a huge amount of time with Mr. Ely. We know every census tract, we know every apartment. Believe me, we know all these issues. Draft Plan One, please. This was the one that we were interested in in the beginning. It had this kind of funky District Six that wrapped around District Three through the work of this public process. And Mr. Johnson, we commend you for that. You've come up with much better maps, but if for some reason you want District One, that map number one, draft map number one, it's acceptable to us because it preserves District One and District Three for the settlement, the, the needs for the settlement agreement.
Mr. Capello, excuse me, do I understand that one and three are exactly the same in the three maps that you approve of?
Exactly the same as to Districts One and District Three.
Thank you.
If you could look at draft Plan Two. Draft Plan Two violates the spirit of the settlement agreement. It does not provide for any majority CVAP Latino district, and that's because it has extended deeply into the apartments, the student apartment housing down by the City College, and taken in all of Pilgrim Terrace. And that has violated that. Also, it changed the east side, made it only 46, 49%. Three, Two, One Distribution Plan. This is a map that we, does not create any majority Latino district. It has only 46 and 41%. We're against it. Map Six, the downtown district plan. Map Six has only one Latino majority district, that's District Two at 52%. So District One and Three no longer have a majority Latino intra, uh, population, and we are opposed to that. Number seven, Eyes on State Street. This does not provide any district with, with a majority Latino CVAP, CVAP majority. Violates the, the actual words of the settlement agreement, is unacceptable. Maps Eight and Nine, the Mission Heritage Plan, provide for only one, not two Latino CVAP districts. You may do whatever you wish with the Upper East and these other things, but when you do it, if you want to make changes with regards to Four and Six, please do so. We have no objections to that, so long as One and Three remain just as they are in this, in Map One or Map Three. One and Three, Map One and Three, are the only districts that are acceptable to us. So with the Mission Heritage Plan, which was the Upper East, those people and their issues, for some reason, they took blocks out of Three and One and eliminated the whole purpose of the settlement. It's unacceptable to us. Plan Ten, the Naomi Green Plan, only has one majority Latino district, not two. That violates it. Number Eleven, I'll just skip to these, Maintaining Community Interests. This plan takes away East Beach from District One. Could you, thank you, could you, would you emphasize or highlight that, please? This is what's a classic gerrymander. This East Beach, each Beach, East Beach is the Latino area, this is where Dwight Murphy Field is, they use East Beach, and this is critical to the East Beach District and that neighborhood, and so this map is unacceptable to us. Map Twelve, please. This is called the Community Neighborhood Alliance Plan. This plan does not provide for any majority Latino district. The two Latino districts, One and Three, are 49 and 48. And by the way, there was some discussion by Mr. Johnson about total population deviation versus voting age deviation. Let me just have you listen to me on that. We disagree with Mr. Johnson on total population deviation. The cases are now clear, 5% is the safe harbor, not 10%. So your districts can't vary more than 5% in total population. According to our agreement, they must be majority districts in total voting age. 49% and 48% is not a majority. Number Thirteen, Mr. Vissello's Plan. Mr. Vissello is a gentleman that is, could you highlight his Brinkerhoff area? Isn't that the Brinkerhoff issue?
Yes.
Could you highlight that, please? So, as far as what ultimately is going to be, each and every one of you can see, as Mr. Johnson said, there's an interest in all districts and all council members to have some involvement with State Street, either Upper State Street or Lower State Street. This gives us, I think, the adult store and the liquor store. I'm sorry, Mr. Vissello, that's not good enough. District Three should have access to State Street, just like all the other districts, so his plan is unacceptable to us. Fourteen and Fifteen, the Santa Barbara Community Plan, does not provide for majority districts, and it has a total deviation over 5%. Let's go to Sixteen, the Roosevelt Plan. I understand the, the gentleman that had an interest in the Roosevelt School, we understand that issue, but it is important to us, if you could highlight Cannon Perdido Street here, please, Mr. Johnson. On the east side, critical to the east side is Cannon Perdido Street. We would have liked to have gotten in Santa Barbara High School, but it involved problems with apartments, et cetera, and didn't. But the, the Boys and Girls Club is on Cannon Perdido. The National Guard Armory, which is used by the east side, is on Cannon Perdido. Cannon Perdido is critical to the east side, and we do not believe having the Roosevelt School District is anywhere near as important as maintaining the community of interest on the east side, so we're opposed to Sixteen. Seventeen, the Page Plan, does not provide for any majority Latino districts, and so we're against that. Mr. Ebenstein's Plan, Eighteen, has a 27.68% total deviation, and that's just a violation of the districting rules, and so we're against that. If you could go to that plan, however, and show the area here on Salinas. And you asked a question, Councilmember Murillo. As you can see here, they cut Salinas straight off and made this district so large that, or so small, that, I think it's 12,000 in, in that district versus an average of about 14,500 per district. If you could now go to Three, and I want to talk about this issue right about here, again, the same area, this is our map, too, that's not it.
Oh, Draft Three?
Yeah, Draft Three, thank you. And if you'd highlight this area. So an issue has come up, and that is whether or not the homes that are, have been taken in on this overlooked lane area and this area in here could be cut off by cutting the census block. No objection to that whatsoever. The importance to us in getting the census block was Cleveland School, which is clearly an east side school, that that remain in. And so if, if in fine tuning your map, you wish to fine tune the homes that are clearly more of a community interest with this Upper Eucalyptus Hill area, you, we have no objection to cutting that census block, block whatsoever. Mr. Crowe's map, we've discussed, the neighborhood based district plan does not provide for any majority district. So that is a complete summary of what our analysis is with our expert of this. I did it fairly quickly, it's all in my letter. We recognize you have a lot to do tonight, you have a lot of issues other than the issues that we have raised and that we have resolved in the settlement. We wish you the best. If you have any questions, please ask them. It is very important to us that Map Three, or the districts in Map Three, or Map One, or the Ealing's Map, as to the east side, District One and District Three remain inviolate. Any questions?
Yeah, actually, did you, I don't think I remember you talking about Community, the SB Community Ones, or did you? Maybe I missed that.
Yes, I did. Is that...
Fourteen and Fifteen, I guess.
Fourteen and Fifteen.
Fifteen.
You want to put that up?
I didn't, yeah.
This, I said, did not provide for two majority Latino districts and had a total deviation of over 5%.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me just clarify there. There are two versions of SB Community Map. There was a first draft that came in, in the online system, and he's right, when they processed that, it did not have two seats. The folks that sent it in were sharpened on their toes, and, and what I had missed is they had sent a note saying, please split the census block over on the east side. And so when that gets, does get split, it does bring District, oh, and, and make Three match up. So we do, in, in Community Split Two, we do get a 52 and a 50.
And you take Cleveland School out of, out of One, don't you?
Right, it does take Cleveland School out.
So if you had this particular map and added Cleveland School, and if that fits with all the numbers, that would be acceptable?
And, and I can just clarify, so as a result, District Three in this is the same as District Three in Draft One and Draft...
All right, according to our letter to you, it says, first and most importantly, the data does not appear to be correct, so we disagree with Mr. Johnson's data and the data that has been submitted. It appears that the, all the population from the block split on the east end of the east side district was allocated to District Four, not District One. District One then added significant population with the addition of Santa Barbara High School and the adjacent Laguna area. The allocation of population appears to create the numbers used to calculate the CVAP populations. However, the justification for a total allocation to one district would be a majority of the population, and the allocation of all of the split block to District Four rather than District One is therefore invalid. If a valid allocation is performed, the CVAP percentages and populations will vary and likely significantly. In addition, even if the numbers are correct, this plan has a total deviation of 7.04% and one district has an individual variation of 4.53%. We believe these figures are inconsistent with the CVRA compliance, given the fact that the maps can be drawn with smaller percentages of deviation. That's our position with regards to that map, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Capello, no offense to your prose, but can you interpret that for us in simpler language? What are their objections to this map?
Well, it's this issue of allocating the...
Sense.
No, it's no problem, and I understand what you're saying, and, and it's the issue of allocating the split block and which way to do it. And, and yes, 7% is a high deviation. So I think as is, as is drawn today, yes, 7% is pretty high. Can we clean that up and get it down? Can we debate back and forth, the allocation of population? Yes, if this is where we ended up, you know, we could talk about counting rooftops, which is something we do sometimes, of actually going into the census block and counting residential rooftops and putting them percentage here and percentage there and bouncing it out. So I think, I think the statement is a good one about as is drawn today.
I guess the point is, and we'll probably hear from the public who are supporting this plan of their intent, I believe, is more about Oak Park and downtown, and if there was a way to, to satisfy the numbers in District One, I guess that would be my question to you, if that...
Well, this is, this is David Ely, and I'd like him to explain maybe in his prose rather than mine.
Please.
And, go ahead.
Sure, thank you.
The block that we're talking about splitting on the east side there has 1,600 people in it. Okay. Yeah, so it's this area. It's my opinion from looking at the land use, the apartment complexes, the number of houses, that approximately 1,400 of that population, at least, is in the east side. And so in, in our allocations, we allocated the entire 1,600 to District One. The way that the data is allocated here, even though all of the same population is in District One, the population is allocated to District Six, I mean, to District Four. That creates, if you're consistent in the allocation of population, or you use what I feel is a justified allocation of the population, you're going to generate a 20% population deviation in this district because by taking this population out of the district on the western side of the district, if you can, if you can scoot it over, this entire area, which has approximately 1,500 people, have been added to the district. So in actual fact, this, this District One has 1,500 people more in it than...
Okay.
Than the other District One, even though the boundaries on the east side are virtually the same.
Okay, so I'll just go back to my question of if we were able to fix that to your satisfaction in District One, but keep what I think is the intent of what the people who put this map together related to Oak Park and downtown, would that be acceptable to you and your, and your clients?
Yeah.
Maybe you know something I don't know.
I, I, I...
I think what we're just getting at is if we...
No, I don't.
When you're the mayor, that's probably why you do. What did you say about Oak Park?
We're basically just saying if Districts One and Districts Three are the same, you don't have a problem with the other allocation of the Oak Park neighborhood. That, that's really the fundamental difference between Santa Barbara Community Plan Number Two and Plan Number Three, is it, it isn't even, I think this is an unintended consequence of that.
Right.
The, the real issue is the Samarcan neighborhood being part of District Six versus being just part of District Five.
And what, what does Oak Park have to do with District One?
That's my point. That's, we're saying, if all of the issues, if District One and District Three were the same in all these plans, you don't have a problem with them. Right.
Okay, the, the answer is, we have no objection to what you do with Oak Park.
Thank you.
This does add in the high school and a lot of population, which would, may change the numbers that we're interested in.
I understand completely.
We tried hard to get the high school in, and we weren't able to do it. So, and then you have the problems on the other side that Mr. Ely just explained. Again, I, you know, please, do what you want with all the other districts. Have at it. But the two districts that we've worked so hard on that are part of our settlement agreement, we're very protective of.
Okay, I think that answers the question adequately. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, so, so another disagreement or tension that I heard between you and our demographer is a 5% variation versus a 10%.
There's no question about that.
Okay, so...
He's wrong, I'm sorry, he's wrong. He's not a lawyer, he's a demographer.
We can just say politely that if the courts prefer 5%, then we should go that way, and, and Mr. Johnson has learned something today. But can I make a point to you about District Six in this Plan Two map, is that it has 20% Latino CVAP?
We know that.
That's important to me. I know you were focusing on, on east side and west side, but if we can get a good chunk of Latino voters in Six, that's, I think, that's where I'm coming from with wanting to, wanting to get your support for this configuration.
Okay, well, Councilmember Murillo, we spent a lot of time deciding, we had five at one time, we're down to four. Getting unanimity of four on the issues that were most important to us, and that was two districts.
Okay.
There is a large Latino population there and, in Six, no question about it. Have at it. Do your best. We have ideas, but I don't want to get involved with them. I really don't. I've got too much to do.
You have to catch a plane.
No, no, I got too much to do to get you all, seven, to agree to something so we don't have to go to court, contrary to popular opinion, although I love court, I'd rather resolve this with you all.
Us, too. If I still have the floor, Madam Mayor? Mr. Johnson, can you show us the difference between Ealing's and Draft Three? Because I'm going to disappoint my friend who likes the Ealing's Map, that I disagree with you, Mr. McCarter, that the traffic only comes from Las Positas. It also comes up west of Valerio, Valerio Canyon. I live, you know, there, I exercise in that area, and there's a lot of traffic that comes up the back way.
Working on it.
And then over...
Ms. Murillo, we do have a lot of public comments, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we want to hear from people first before you start, I think. So we want to hear from people first before you start, I think, directing staff or us, where to go.
Well, I'm just telegraphing then that I'm going to ask questions about that.
All right. That's good. So why don't we do the public comment, and then we can grapple up here. All right. So Mr. John, Dr. John, you're first. Come on up.
Good evening, councilpersons. I'm going to give you my... I come here for the historical aspects. This is a historical event. This is history being made. This is, as I refer to it, as an extra illegal election process, totally illegal. Now, as I listen to Mr. Johnson, and this is my feeling, Mr. Johnson, you don't know this community, sir, wherever you... Oh, that's you, right there. You don't know this community, sir. And I'm suggesting this goes back to the drafting board, and I'm suggesting that we have a community of people who know these areas, not just one person drawing and selecting and drawing. We need a community of people who know each area. As I listen to Mr. Johnson, he's saying we have this weird thing, you know, we have this here, we've got people here who know this community, and that's what I want. I want people to know this community, to do this, you know? Now, we've had a gentleman here who has a plan, but Mr. Johnson, sir, you're not from this community, are you? No, he's not from this community. I knew that when I heard him. So, and another question is, do you think three Latino, Mexican-American, Hispanic councilpersons can be elected with your plan? That's a question. You don't have to answer that, I'm just asking a question. I think not. I think not. And the next time we go to court, we go to the feds, because there's federal judges waiting to chomp down on this. Whoever took this to the local district court and played politics with this got the whole thing wrong. Never take a political situation to the local...
Thank you, your time's up.
Thank you.
Lucas Zucker will be followed by Rosemary Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Lucas Zucker, researcher for Cause, formerly known in Santa Barbara as Pueblo, as well as being the primary organization who's worked for many years to get out the vote in working-class and immigrant neighborhoods in Santa Barbara. We also have nearly a decade of redistricting experience, including for the Ventura County Board of Supervisors and the state legislature and congressional maps for Ventura and Santa Barbara counties. Cause organizes and advocates for underrepresented communities in Santa Barbara, including Latinos and other people of color, young people, working class, and low-income families, renters, and people dependent on public transit. These are voices that have often been underrepresented on this council dais and many others throughout the region and throughout the country. Our primary concern is fair representation of the east side and west side, but since the districts covering these neighborhoods are mostly the same in all of the viable maps, except for a few minor differences, I won't focus on them too much in my comments today. Our other concern is the fair representation of the downtown area and the neighborhoods immediately surrounding it that share its demographics. Downtown has a diverse population with many younger apartment dwellers, immigrants, and working-class families. Many walk, bike, or use public transit to get to work. Most are renters, struggling with the squeeze of a Santa Barbara that grows less affordable every year. This is a clear community of interest within the city's population. Cause supports the Santa Barbara Community Map Number Two, as it puts downtown with nearby neighborhoods that share communities of interest, such as Oak Park and the areas immediately above the east side, rather than San Mercand or the Riviera. I'm sure that the city council is smart enough to make the minor adjustments that may be needed to District One over there, to get it to the plaintiffs' liking, while still maintaining the spirit of the overall communities of interest in this map. However, many of the other maps submitted chop this area up. Several of the most egregious of these maps take a district based in the affluent hillside homeowners of the Riviera and snake down a gerrymandering ribbon, cutting right through the heart of downtown. Any map that puts west downtown in a district with the Riviera is a clear violation of the most basic principles of drawing district lines.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rosemary Munoz will be followed by Greg Freeland, and then Mickey Flax.
Hello, good evening. As a native of Santa Barbara's east side, a member of Cause and a community activist with friends and family in the downtown sector, I just want to say I'm in favor of the Santa Barbara Community Two split. I speak to people regularly about participating in city issues and encouraging folks to vote. I'm in favor both of working-class residents being represented in the downtown and also the Latino community. They have issues in common, including public transportation and concerns as tenants. I'm opposed to the map, such as Map One, because it does divide the neighborhood of the downtown area, and I feel that it's important for our community to have a representative in city council that sees about the interests of the downtown community. The future of Santa Barbara is very important to us and to my extended family, who plans to continue to reside here. Thank you very much.
Greg Freeland will be followed by Mickey Flax, and then Lindsay Baker.
Good evening, City Council. Greg Freeland, I'm a political science professor and written a couple articles on community involvement in redistricting. And I think there is a bit of support for the map I presented last week, SBCM Two, but I'm certainly open to modifications that the council might want to make in order to respond to the concerns brought up by other speakers. For example, we could add a few more things to reduce the population variation below 5%. And for instance, you know, we could include the Brinkerhoff area with D Six. We could move the Pilgrim Terrace area from D Three to increase the Latino population in that district. These are all changes that can be made while still maintaining the integrity of the important communities of interest that we have in this map, too, here.
Thank you. Mickey Flax will be followed by Lindsay Baker, and then Richard Flax.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of Santa Barbara Community Number Two. The proposed settlement is about creating Districts One and Three as the two majority Latino districts, and the Santa Barbara Community Map Number Two, despite what Mr. Capello said, keeps those two whole and robust. It is also important to create a district that contains downtown and Oak Park. Renters make up 65% of city residents at large, and making District Six a downtown and Oak Park district would give those renters a voice on the council. Mr. Capello doesn't care about any of the other districts, but some of us who live in them do. District Six on our map is drawn to represent the political voice of the younger, lower-income, more transit-dependent, and overwhelmingly renter population of the downtown flatland areas. In addition to the downtown and Oak Park areas, it extends north along De La Vina to State to include the apartments and condominiums along Calle Crespos. Districts Six and Five both includes neighborhoods that are significantly, but not majority Latino, to ensure Latino communities outside of the east side and west side have a political voice within those districts. Districts Four and Five have older populations and ensure political representation for seniors. Districts, the upper east side of Santa Barbara, from Constance to Valerio, is included in District Four, as this area is similar to the Riviera with larger lots and more single-family homes. The area south of Valerio, where I live, is composed of more apartments, duplexes, condos, and multifamily dwellings, so it belongs in the downtown area.
Thank you.
Just one thing, tweaks are possible. We respect the need to tweak the map, and what we're asking is to fit the fixes that are possible, to fix the deviation that's above 5%, and we support the Ealing's Park and Arroyo Burro changes, and we support the Brinkerhoff change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lindsay Baker, followed by Richard Flax, will be followed by Daniel McCarter. Dewalman, you missed a photo right there. Okay.
Do it again. They never ask again.
All right.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I am Lindsay Baker, speaking for the Elections Committee of the Santa Barbara League of Women Voters. One thing we have learned in attending the meetings devoted to changing to district elections is that the public strongly favors moving to even-year elections, simply because so many people vote in those years. Recent analysis confirms that fact. The League has always been anxious to see as many people as possible use their franchise to vote, and in 2007, we supported Measure A, which asked the voters to move city elections to even years. We understand that it might be harder to do this year because of the many complicated changes you will be making. However, since the whole shift to district elections is designed to involve more minority voters, it seems that changing to even years as soon as possible would help in achieving that goal. The League urges city council to consider how soon that change could be made, and you have a copy of my statement.
Richard Flax will be followed by Daniel McCarter, and then Tony Vasallo.
Mayor and Council, I'm speaking here as co-chair of the Santa Barbara Community Action Network, SBCAN. We, of course, join with Cause and other people in supporting the Community Map Two, and I, of course, agree with everything my wife said, except her implied criticisms of Barry Capello, who I have to say we admire very much for taking the initiative and creating the potential for a more fully democratic city in the future.
History is made today. Yes, okay.
Dan McCarter, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm with Friends of Arroyo Burro, and we support Map Three with the tweaks, the Ealing's Park additions that you saw before. And our concern is with Ealing's Park is that it's not just the traffic, and there is a ton of traffic, much, you know, hundreds of cars a day as opposed to some walkthroughs through Valerio, but we're in communication with the Ealing's Park Director, talking about creating access for Bel Air Knolls neighborhood, a possible restoration project, and also there's a Class One bicycle path being slated for going through Las Positas Valley, and we'd like to tie in, actually, the west side through Valerio, through the park, and into that bike path. So those are concerns that we're trying to, we'd like to deal with and encourage. And then also the Arroyo Burro Beach area, which is actually in the county, we know, but really, much of the parking in excess of 200 cars on a nice beach day, park in the Las Positas neighborhoods, and so that, and there, there's some traffic issues and some safety issues as well, so we'd like to include that area. But basically, and most importantly, both parks are in the Arroyo Burro watershed, and we have a community-based vision with guiding principles and recommended actions through this document right here, and I think that it would just afford us a better opportunity to succeed in some of these projects in the future. So, thank you.
Tony Vasallo will be followed by Caroline Vasallo, then Cruzito Herrera Cruz, and the final speaker will be Hillary Blackerby.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, for the record, I'm Tony Vasallo, a Brinkerhoff My wife has yielded her two minutes to me, Madam...
Sure, then you have up to four.
...Mayor, so I won't be so rushed. Well, Mr. Johnson, could you put Map Three up, please? And, Council, what I attempted to do is be very sensitive to the two Latino districts by not upsetting the apple cart, by trying to, you know, add too much to the downtown area, but certainly, I think you all know, and many of you have been involved with issues that we have dealt with in west downtown and Brinkerhoff District, lighting and many others, I don't have to go into because you remember them so well. But we are downtown. We're all about downtown. The lights, the power, if there's a power failure on State Street, Lower State Street, our lights go out on Brinkerhoff, so we are an integral part of downtown. We'd like to remain that way. We'd like the section that I amended from Ortega down to Gutierrez and from De La Vina over to State Street to be included in the downtown district. We have downtown hotels in that district. We have brand-new businesses in that district. We have multi-use condominium projects that have been built in this area that I've outlined, as well as more on the way. We, these are all downtown. I hope the council keeps us in the downtown district. As you know, maintaining a positive image, neighborhood image, is challenging, and that's what I'm all about, and I've put a lot of effort into my neighborhood, and this is my neighborhood. It's challenging downtown, but to continue to improve our image, which, as I say, the Mayor and many of you have helped us with, we need the focus of a councilperson that represents downtown directly, and that means we need to be in Map Three and District Number To lump us in a district other than downtown would likely fractionalize the interests of the residents in that neighborhood, and we have a very diverse neighborhood. It's diverse socially, it's diverse economically, it's diverse ethnically. And finally, I'd just like to emphasize that all of our issues are downtown issues. All of our opportunities are downtown issues, or downtown opportunities. So our councilperson should be the one that represents downtown. Thank you very much.
Before you go, so a question. So this was your map, and I understand the concern that the plaintiffs may have is not having enough State Street frontage, I suppose. So am I understanding when you say this is downtown, we are downtown, you're talking Brinkerhoff Avenue, or is there a smaller section than that that could fit that may, for example, going to Gutierrez up to Haley Street? So Brinkerhoff still stays in Six, and I have no idea if that works for Mr. Capello or not, but I just want to get a sense from you first about how that could be tinkered with a bit that may fit better and still meet your intent, if I'm making any sense there, I hope.
No, you're making perfect sense, and it was difficult because of, I tried to earmark an area that was small and that would not upset the balances in Districts One and Three, which we've achieved. Sure, you know, Mr. Johnson is, you know, he's very adept at moving the numbers around to make them work, but to not have the Brinkerhoff downtown historic district in downtown would be a shame, and so...
So moving from Gutierrez up to Haley, for example...
I can only say that...
And put that and put those two blocks in District Three, keep Brinkerhoff in District Six, would still meet the intent of what you're talking about.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Those two blocks right there.
From Ortega?
From Gutierrez to Haley.
To Haley.
De La Vina to State, those two major blocks. If that was put into District Three and kept the other areas in District Six, including Brinkerhoff and District Six, I think that would still go with the intent that you're asking, with your intent. And like I said, I don't know the numbers, and I don't know if that works with the plaintiffs, but I just want to figure out where you're coming from first.
I see what you're saying in terms of giving a window over to State Street for District One...
District Three.
District Three.
Right.
And I understand what you're saying in terms of keeping the Brinkerhoff historic district... —in terms of keeping the Brinkerhoff Historic District in, connected to, connected to downtown District Six. That would take it up to Ortega, all the way to Ortega because we're, I believe Ortega's the line.
That would be to Haley because Brinkerhoff ends at Haley.
Just to clarify—
Map Three ends at Ortega.
Ortega's always the north border of what we're talking about. The question is, do we come all the way down from Ortega to Gutierrez or just from Ortega to Haley? Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
That would work with—
As the Mayor just said.
Right.
Okay. Nope, that, that answers my question.
Yes, I mean, I—
I think that, I think that still stays within the intent of what you're talking about.
I think that's a very good compromise if the plaintiffs are really that adamant about not including the area down to Gutierrez.
Well, I think the issue for them—
I think that's a, that's a good—
And we can talk about that up here. I think the issue for them is have more State Street frontage and that would give them going up to Haley Street instead and so I, but that's, that's not your problem, that's our problem.
No, it's not my problem at all, it's the Council, but certainly if, certainly I'm making my strongest pitch to keep the Brinkerhoff—
Got it.
—District downtown. Thank you so much.
Okeydoke. Cruzito Herrera Cruz and then Hillary Blackerby and then Dora Perez.
Madam Mayor, tengo una pregunta.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yo soy demandante.
I am one of the plaintiffs—
En este caso—
In this case.
Puedo tener más minutos que dos minutos?
May I have more than two minutes?
Porque yo tengo presentación.
Because I have a presentation.
You, you can have just the same as everyone else, which is two minutes. I can start the clock now, so you can start your two minutes now.
Bless you. Yo estoy de acuerdo con la mapa tres de la ciudad más o menos.
With the Map Three of the city, more or less.
O si miramos las mapas—
If you look at the maps—
—en el punto J, que si tiene que poner J—
Point J, if you could please fit on—
Si tiene que hacer la línea de Salinas, Old Coast Village—
If you can put the line from—
—captulate y incorporar eso en, en el district—
Put the line from Salinas to, the Salinas, Old—
Old Coast Village.
Aquí arriba, Old Coast Highway.
From, from Salinas to Old Coast Highway. If you can put a line from Salinas to Old Coast Highway.
Mr. Cruz, if you could address us, please.
Here's a laser.
There's a, there's a pointer right there. I just stopped the clock, I'll start it again.
Muchas gracias.
Mm-hmm.
Entonces yo estoy diciendo que si tenía que incorporar—
What I'm saying is that what it should be—
—en el distrito del East Side, esto.
On the East Side District, you should incorporate—
Es ese bloque de censos.
This, this census block.
Porque como escuchamos hoy, que pudimos dividir bloques de censos.
Because what we heard today, census blocks can be divided.
Y hay un desacuerdo con los abogados y con los expertos.
And there is a disagreement between the lawyers and between the experts.
Y por eso las matemáticas de las, las presentaciones—
That's why the mathematics of all presentations—
—no están actual.
They're not current.
Y no son correctas.
And they're not correct.
Porque no toman el porcentaje de todos los ciudadanos.
Because they're not including all the percentages of the citizens.
Porque estamos hablando de las personas—
Just shrink it, all the way through.
You can shrink it all the way through.
Y porque estamos hablando que aquí en el East Side—
We are speaking the here on the East Side.
—el CVA BAP es un porcentaje muy grande.
The CVA BAP is a very high percentage.
Y también aquí en el downtown renter, West Side District, también lo mismo.
And in this, the downtown and this city—
Pues los distritos del Tres y el distrito del Seis de los rentantes.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Muchas gracias, Senora Mayor, but to be continued, I don't appreciate Margaret Mary Leoni paying plaintiffs off—
Cruz, your time's up.
—with no MP money this fall—
Not, Mr. Cruz, your time is up. Your time is up.
Defense attorneys giving political contributions—
Your time is up, Mr. Cruz.
My time might be up, but you shut the clock off, but I need a time to speak.
Your time to speak is now over and you can speak after this council meeting's over, so would you please take a seat?
It might not be over.
Please take a seat, Mr. Cruz.
There's violation happening immediately now.
Take a seat. If you want me to recess, I'll recess.
I can recess if you would like.
Will you please take a seat?
I can.
Okay, then I'm gonna recess. Perez and then Nancy Cabrera will be the final speaker. Ms. Blackerby.
Thank you. So my name's Hillary Blackerby. I live in Oak Park. I'm, I'm happy to, to watch this process unfold as fast as it has, but we know that's the, the nature of this for us. I'm excited about East Side and West Side having representation, there being 50% Latino CVA, I think that's great and it seems like it's eminently doable in several of the maps. The one that was just, sorry, the one that's up and, and it seems like there's tweaking that could be done, but the thing I want to focus on is Oak Park because that's where I live. I love East Side and West Side, but with a .5% vacancy rate in Santa Barbara, couldn't move there even if I wanted to. Oak Park, definitely, I think, having lived there for a long time, matches with downtown. All due respect to people who wanted to lump it in with Upper East or with Samarcand, I think it's very different. It's a very different neighborhood, a lot more apartment dwellers and matches up with downtown a lot better, the way people get around, even following the bus routes kind of goes in a particular way and I think it's really important to, no matter what you do, although I think this map gets really close, is to keep Oak Park with downtown separate from Upper East and separate from, from Samarcand and it seems like the rest of it is pretty doable. So I appreciate your work and your focus and how hard it must be to try to get your mind around all of this or some of this, so I don't envy your task, so good luck.
Thank you. Dora Perez, she's still here?
Yes, she's got that.
Dora, yes, come on, there you are, come on up.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening to all of you.
Mi nombre es Dora Perez.
My name is Dora Perez.
Gracias por darme la oportunidad de venir a representar las familias trabajadoras.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to be here to represent the working families—
—en este proceso.
—in this process.
Yo solamente quiero comunicar mi—
I'd like to communicate.
—mi, estoy un poco angustiada con el mapa número uno.
I'm a little bit anguished over map number one.
No estoy de acuerdo porque divide parte de la comunidad—
I cannot agree because it divides part of the community.
—de la comunidad latina.
Of the Latino community.
Y en ese aspecto, pues para mí creo que la comunidad latina no podría tener una representación—
And in that aspect, I believe that then the Latino community would not have a representation—
—política y social. Y por otro lado, estoy de acuerdo en el mapa número tres.
The other hand, though, I do agree with map number three.
Donde las áreas pueden estar representadas—
Where the areas are being represented or could be represented.
—y la comunidad latina puede estar integrada—
And the Latino community could be integrated within.
—y podría tener una mayor facilidad—
It would be able to have a greater facility or ability—
—en una representación de voz política.
—in a representation with a political voice.
—y de otros aspectos como educativos.
And in other aspects, like the education—
—sociales.
—social aspects.
—de vivienda.
Shelter or—
—de trabajo.
And work.
Por lo tanto, pues creo que para nosotros, para nosotros sería mejor el mapa número tres.
For us, map number three would be better.
Ya que la comunidad latina podría ser mejor representada en, en todos aspectos.
Because that way, the Latino community will be well represented in all aspects of it.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
And Nancy Cabrera? Carlos, I think, or maybe. Okay, gracias, all right, thank you, thank you, Carlos. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I support the Santa Barbara community too. It's very important to include our downtown State Street because we all do shopping, I think, at least once a year there. We also use public transportation. I know my mother, she's a hard-working mother and she uses, you know, the bus quite a lot, so I think that would be ideal to, to include on, on the Santa Barbara community two map. So thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. That concludes the public comment. So as we go back to council, I just want to maybe set some strategy of how we want to move forward, which first thing is we don't have to make any final decisions tonight. We do have a, a special work session at 4:00 PM on Monday, so it is 10 of 9 after a long day, so I don't think we need to be pressured to make an absolute decision. What I do think staff would need and what would help between now and Monday is for us to give some direction on where we're headed and then it sounds like we can tweak here and there, we might be using that word quite a bit, tweaking, so that I think should be more in line with the conversations up here about what resonates well or not and, and perhaps by Monday, instead of having, I don't know, however many 18 maps, we'll have four or five or less or something to look at that we can make a final decision on, on Monday. So why don't I just start by, I think there, there are two things and I'll just throw out here, it seems to me that both the Oak Park area and Brinkerhoff Avenue, however that works, somehow needs to be in the downtown area. I think I've heard that quite a bit and I want to say all of this, saying of course that as much as one, Districts One and Three stay where they need to stay as much as we can, then that's ideal and so that's where the tweaking comes in. That's why I was asking Mr. Vasallo about moving that block from Gutierrez up to Haley Street, keep putting, keeping that in District Three because I believe is what I heard from Mr. Capello, that having more State Street frontage was important to them. So I'm not saying that's the exact where I'm going, but I, but I think that kind of intent with, with what I heard from public comment of getting Samarcand, keeping Samarcand neighborhood in, in Five and keeping Oak Park in Six somehow and then somehow including Brinkerhoff Avenue in District Six and I don't know how all that works or if it could work, but I think that might, is that the kind of direction? So that's like, that's how I'm gonna start and ask, is that helpful or does that really make things much more confusing or what would be helpful in terms of moving forward from here?
I think that's definitely helpful and let me show, for a purpose of discussion, let me show you kind of, at least what's in my mind as I hear the discussion going on.
Let me interrupt while Doug is pulling that up. I think to the extent the council can talk about communities of interest, that would be really helpful, which is what you're doing, but to frame it in those terms would be very helpful and we could take direction from there. And I thought the Mayor's suggestion of trying to narrow this down to three or four maps is a great suggestion as well. One of the tasks we have is that the, I, I do have a draft resolution adopting the plan, but it needs to be customized based on your comments, so I'm trying to take as good notes as I can tonight to, to fill in the resolution for Monday.
Okay. So, Mr. Johnson.
So part of what, at least what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm hearing wrong, not hearing correctly, is a desire to essentially get something like the Santa Barbara Community Map Two, but address the concerns raised about District One by the plaintiffs. So what we're looking at on the screen right now, the shading is the Santa Barbara Community Map Two and then the black lines is the District One that's in Draft Plan One and Draft Plan Three and, and all of its relationships. So one possibility would be essentially to return One to these lines and take the school back in, maybe split that block as was discussed, so that the school's in One, but maybe not the Loop. That would lose the high school and the junior high from District One, they'd go, and essentially this bump where Six comes over would slide south. So it would, it would still come over to the east, but it would do it all the way down to, to Cannon Perdido and it would not come all the way up to Val, to Valerio. Where that line would end up would depend on the numbers, but you'd have a very similar, you know, not, that would keep Samarcand out of the downtown seat, it would keep Oak Park with downtown. We could also, especially as was somewhat discussed, look at putting Brinkerhoff into Six, that's a separate thing, but you'd have Oak Park to downtown, the difference would be that this bump would slide south in order to pick up some of this population and essentially rotate around these three so that One ends up in the same place as it is in Draft One and Draft Three. So that's, obviously I haven't drawn it, I don't know the exact numbers or where that line would end up, but that's the idea if we're going back to District One from the draft plans, but still keeping the rest of, of the idea of Community Two.
Great. So I guess I'd like to hear from my colleagues about something along those lines and then I'll just throw out the, another issue because I would like to hear from my colleagues about Ealing's Park, which is, I understand the intent of why someone might want to put Ealing's Park into District Five, however, I'm also looking at if there is, let's say there's new activity happening at, at Ealing's Park, the people who would be mostly affected by it are in District Two, all along the Mesa, on Valerio Hill, in Belair, so it would, it makes more sense to me, I would think, that, that the district representative that covers Ealing's Park should also cover those households. That to me is more like a community of interest because of the border of Ealing's Park, whereas on Las Pascidas Road, I understand the intent behind the watershed and, and those are good things. Actually frankly, having two council members who focus on Arroyo Burro, the, the Creek Shed, might be even a good thing. So, so I guess I want to hear from my colleagues about that idea of whether Ealing's Park should stay, should go into Five or stay into Two, because my inclination is it should stay in Two just because of the neighborhood issues that surround Ealing's Park if there should be new activity or proposals or anything like that. So those, those are my big picture thoughts. Let me go to Mr. Francisco and then Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The problem that I see with this Community Two split is, well, there are several problems, but the main problem is what a strange district District Four becomes and the split of San Roque. To me, that's, that's unacceptable. I think that Draft Plan Three is a better place to start from. It keeps the Upper East Side with the Lower Riviera and Riviera as an intact community. It keeps Samarcand, I mean, it keeps San Roque intact. Oak Park is joined with downtown and the, and One and Three are, as the plaintiffs have indicated, and obviously there might be a little bit of room to tweak there, but they have said those districts are there in their current form, something that they think is absolutely necessary. As far as Ealing, Ealing Park is concerned, I think that could go either way. I don't have strong feelings about that, but I, I do think it would be a big mistake to split San Roque.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do think Ealing's Park should stay where it is because of the neighborhood and land use issues that the Mayor has outlined and, Mr. McCarter, I think we can get to watershed planning a different way and I'd like to appoint you to the Creeks Committee, as a matter of fact. Really impressed with your concern about Arroyo Burro and, and the beach and, and the whole area. And I can't believe it, I'm agreeing with Dale Francisco about something and that is if we, in, out of respect for the plaintiffs and your strong support for Map Three, we would start there and add the changes that the Mayor is suggesting, Brinkerhoff into the downtown zone and Samarcand into District Five, the blue, because it has way more in common with Hidden Valley, I think. And then this way, the San Roque neighborhood mostly stays together and the Upper East, according to our general plan, stays intact, which is important. So why are you on Draft Plan One? Draft Plan Three.
Well, Draft Plan One is just the outline.
Oh, oh, okay.
This is, this is a Community Two with the—
This was my, this was my conversation. Okay, understood.
Do you want to, do you want to see Three? You want to see Three?
No, no, I'm, I'm just making the point that I don't think we should come back with five maps. I'm just making the point that I don't think we should come back with 5 maps. If the plaintiffs are saying they're happy with this really, 2 or 3, we just shouldn't deviate from there, especially if there's a way to get to the concerns improving draft map 3. And those are my comments for now, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Rouse.
Madam Mayor, if I may, one thought for the council to consider as you're making comments is...
Oh.
Oh, yes, sorry. One thought as you're making the comments about Ealing's Park is it is possible to not move Ealing's Park, but to move a Royal Borough, if that's the way you want to go. So I just want to throw that out there for discussion.
How would that look? I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Isn't the creek already in District 5?
Well, it's the...
Oh, the park.
The park, yeah. So it puts both sides of the creek.
It's the Beach Park, not Douglas Family Preserve? Isn't that which?
I love this map.
That's so cool.
Yeah, that's the Douglas Family Preserve. Oh, yes.
Yes, we're talking about this area.
That's above, that's above, that's up at the top of the bluffs.
Right.
So... That's not a Royal Borough Beach Park.
Okay. I take it back then.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I didn't phrase it the way our attorney said, was communities of interest. I do believe that Brinkerhoff Avenue is a community of interest with downtown, and Samarcand is, or, right, Samarcand is more of a community of interest with...
Hidden Valley.
Thank you.
Yeah, got it.
It is late, isn't it?
It is. We've had a long day, but that's why we don't have to make a final decision tonight. So, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I was gonna suggest since the plaintiffs have outlined the three things that are, three maps that are acceptable to them as of this document, that we work with those, go forward with those. Mr. Johnson, I think, has enough of the tweaks and suggestions from the public and us to maybe perhaps give us a few options to work with at the next hearing. I think we can shorten this process tremendously rather than come back with multiple, multiple maps. Break it down to these three so we don't have to go back and forth with the plaintiffs about it and go forward with some small tweaks of Mr. Johnson. I think we can probably get this done pretty quickly on Monday.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the comments that you made and basically the series of comments that Brinkerhoff, Oak Park definitely belong in a community of interest, that the Ealing's Park, that the impacts of Ealing's Park are to the east and north. So I think that's important to keep that combination of stimuli and impacts and impactees together. And then Mr. Francisco's comments about maximizing the, keeping San Roque together, and then Ms. Murillo's comment that the Samarcand is a, has a more like community of interest with the areas to the west. So those... I just think that's a good set of parameters to work with. I appreciated what Mr. Johnson was doing with that, moving that downtown leg southward there. I thought that was a... I think that what I've heard Mr. Capello say is that down to Cannon Perdido Street worked so that that gives you that much distance to go anyway, while being consistent with plaintiffs' concerns.
Art.
I agree with your comments, as well as Councilmember Murillo's and Councilmember White's, in the sense that the Santa Barbara community two map would be the starting place, making Samarcand's community of interest connected to the District 5, and making the changes to Brinkerhoff to include Brinkerhoff into District 3, and then tweaking District 1, excuse me, District 6 to, and then tweaking District 1 to match up with the plaintiff's map.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Madam Mayor, I acknowledge that it's getting late. People seem to have good logical ideas, but we're not ready... I'm certainly not ready to settle on anything. I haven't heard anything nonsensical said here yet. So I would just like to take some time to study. I think it makes sense to maybe limit it to the three that the plaintiffs have agreed to.
Okay. Actually, we have to get down to one, one map, right? So I know, I know Mr. Capello mentioned draft 1, but draft 1 and 3, draft 3 was actually better than draft 1. So does anyone up here want to continue with draft 1? Because it sounds like to me there's maybe three options that we need to finalize on Monday. One is draft Plan 3. One is the Ealing's Park, and we can, which is basically draft Plan 3, just switching Ealing's Park over. So that's... And then, and then there's this tweaking map. And with all these conversations that we've had up here with the idea of keeping Districts 1 and 3 as whole as possible, but seeing if we can tweak here and there based on all the comments we had. Right? So that sounds to me like where we could start Monday, unless there's something else that we're missing. I don't know if that helps, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Klon.
I think so. I don't want you to offload too much to Monday, so it's my...
Well, that's why I was trying to narrow it. I thought that was narrowing it down. Maybe not.
It is, but more discussion is better.
Okay.
If you can handle another round.
So let's keep discussion, but that's where I'm hearing we're headed, so...
Madam Mayor, if Mr. Johnson still has enough juice left in him, why doesn't he make those changes now?
Because I don't think we have enough juice in us to... I mean, I think you need some time to really focus instead of us staring at you, moving numbers around and see if it fits. But I don't know, maybe you can, just with the wave of the wand, make a map happen.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Wave of the wand.
You want us to take a five-minute break and you go for it?
Probably better that he has a little time to do it, because you are moving census districts and census blocks, and it's a little tricky, so...
You're here and you're experts here.
Well, we're happy to stay. So if you want to do it, we'll do it, but it's, you don't want to make any mistakes.
Okay, let me...
Madam Mayor.
We're not going to approve it tonight, so...
I was able to confer with Mr. Capello, and we've agreed that we would make our respective experts available to work with each other between now and Monday.
Okay. All right. Mr. White.
Thank you. Your suggestion about moving the, what, number 3, southward from Ortega to Haley, is that right? That was what your suggestion was there, right?
Talking about my suggestion?
Yes.
I was suggesting, I was looking at the Vasallo map.
Right. Okay, well, whichever one.
So if you look on there, and then moving those two blocks, Gettierras up to Haley, basically.
Right.
Into District 3.
Right.
Yes.
So I mean, I think, I'm curious what Mr. Capello has to say about, I mean, there's, you're, Mr. Capello's concern about State Street exposure, is that enough State Street exposure? Appreciating that many numbers need to work together, and we're not...
Well, since Councilmember Maria will be running from District 3, maybe you should ask her.
That would be self-serving.
But as a plaintiff, I mean, you're the plaintiff's representative, and I'm asking you, I still have the floor on this for a second, I'm asking you, as a plaintiff's representative, whether that's a starter, that's a workable area.
Could you put that, the Vasallo map up too, and then...
Yeah, and then move it up.
Then take those two blocks that are Haley and State Street, and those would be...
Correct, right there, like that, exactly.
Those would be yellow, right?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And you're not suggesting, and that would be it, right? The two...
Well, obviously, there would then need, might be a tinker here or there in order to get the populations right. Would that be right?
Actually, it'd be undoing the earlier tinker, so we wouldn't have to offset it anywhere else. We could just make the change.
All right.
So conceptually, subject to numbers.
Right.
No objection to it.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Any other, I had actually one other, no, two things. Can we agree to keep the Crow House in one district? Can we, I think that seemed, or one census block or whatever it was, can we keep them whole?
Just to clarify, that it's just an issue of the block, the census geography not being precise.
Okay, so we're gonna fix that?
Parcels aren't, yeah, it's not split despite how it looks when you overlay a line.
Okay. And then you had a big J somewhere on the, on East Beach.
The Ellis Goryal apartments.
Across from the zoo. That's a big issue for you, okay.
In terms of...
I was just, honestly, I'm, just because I've been looking at the Bela Squarto property for a long time, just for me personally, and I don't think it has anything to do with population or anything, but it seems to me it fits with the Andre Clark Bird Refuge and the zoo more than District 1. I'm not, I don't mean the rest of the waterfront areas, just that one property there, right on the eastern edge of the city boundary. So that, I just want to put that out there, and I don't think that makes any difference. I don't think there's, there's maybe one person living there with population, but...
As far as the Clark estate, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
But those Ellis Goryal and the East Beach townhomes changed the numbers significantly.
Yeah, and that's not where I'm going at all. It was just looking at the Clark estate.
But the East Beach volleyball courts definitely have to be on the east side.
Right. That still works. I was just looking at that one parcel. Yep, for me. I think, I think that in terms of community of interest of the Bird Refuge and the zoo, and historically, they've been kind of together, and to keep it that way. And of course, the volleyball courts and stuff like that would stay in District 1. That's not what I meant.
Madam Mayor, just so I understand, so I think in draft 1 and draft 3, Ellis Goryal is in District 4, and I think it sounds like we keep it there.
I meant 4, yeah, to keep where...
And, am I understanding right? So the idea might be essentially at the, we could do it at the edge of the parking lot and everything east of the parking lot.
No, because the volleyball nets are east of the parking lot.
Oh, yeah, there they are.
Keep going. Just up the hill. That, see that nice little estate right there? Yeah, that one. Yeah, that parcel right there.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, there's a parcel line there.
There's definitely a parcel line there. Yeah. Yeah, that was my, okay. Any other comments? And is that enough direction at this point? Or, I mean, I know you want more, but what kind of direction can we give that we haven't that would help you?
I feel like my therapist. Talk about your feelings. No, this is great, Mayor. Thank you.
Let me flag one issue that will likely be a big stumbling block on Monday, which is Samarcand's a lot of people, you know, East San Roque's a lot of people. If we take Samarcand out and put it into 5, we have to offset that. And so that's a lot of populat, so that's why the community plan, you know, takes essentially this population offsets this population. So that's gonna be a tough choice, you know, given what you've been saying about, we can't take Samarcand out and not divide San Roque unless we take kind of Hidden Valley and Campania.
What's the, south of the 101 there, though? That population, which is in 5? If that was in 6? But then you got, then you got a weird...
Yeah, and it's not a lot of people.
Okay.
It's, there's a school, it's between the freeway and the school over there, essentially.
Well, and if it doesn't work, that's what we have to figure out. No, that wasn't Pilgrim Terrace. That's not what...
It's beyond, yeah, farther up the freeway from Pilgrim Terrace.
It's west of Pilgrim Terrace, yeah.
Yeah, there's about 230 people there, which is nothing in terms of what we're looking at.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Murillo.
Can you give us some options then on Monday on how to accomplish that? And I actually think San Roque really does have two distinct areas, the east and the west.
Well, and I guess that gets into the issue...
But that's an argument for another time.
I guess that gets into the issue of the Upper East then, if you added, but, I don't know, yeah, we'll have to figure that out. My brain's full, so...
Yeah, I don't raise it to address it right now, I just raise it. That's one thing that, we can't do both very, very easily.
Okay.